Hi, welcome to the Foswell Board Selecting Special Meeting on June 27. Tonight's meeting was asked for by the Craft Group to try and work out some insurance situations between the town and then so on. I'd like to welcome the attorneys and the Craft Group to come up to the table in front of us, please. Okay, just so that we can start with you, Dick, we'll be down the line for the rest of the meetings, please.
Thanks, Mike. I'm Dick Gellerman, Town Council.
Cindy Amara, Town Council.
John Davis and Pierce Davis in Paratano.
Jim Cobry, General Counsel, the Craft Group.
Dean Murphy, Craft Group.
Okay. And Dick, would you like to start?
Thank you. So when we met with you just two nights ago, just to reiterate the issue, the issue is that the current insurer for the town for law enforcement, for law enforcement policy has advised the town that as of July 1st, the deductible for events that occur under the law enforcement policy is going to go to $50,000. Because of that increase, which the board has told me they found unacceptable, we're trying to find solutions to that problem and we've been working with the Craft Organization on that. What's happened since Tuesday with regard to MIA is we spoke, I spoke with them on, yesterday on Wednesday and asked them to, a couple of things, would they agree to postpone the increase in the deductible from $7,500 to $50,000? Would they agree to postpone that until we had the opportunity to resolve these insurance issues with the stadium? They declined to do that. I asked them if they, I asked them if, asked them if they would consider imposing the $50,000 deductible only for concerts as opposed to soccer events, on the theory that soccer is relatively benign in terms of crowd behavior. They declined to do that. And then with John Davis's help, we asked them whether they would consider a prorated premium change to effectively get them to the same place. The proration thinking being that we'd get this resolved relatively quickly and therefore the cost, the net cost of the town would go down. They declined to do that. But the one bit of good news from MIA, and that came in a phone call copied by email today, is that the $50,000 deductible is applicable only to stadium events, it's not applicable townwide. So that's where we are today with MIA. Attorney Cobry and I have had more conversations with one another today than yesterday than either of us care for and I, I do want to say that he's worked very, very, very diligently to try to help the town resolve this issue. He can tell you later, but if I can steal the thunder, they have been able to think they can get in place actually this new policy before the next event, before July 6th. And that's some kind of doing. We've been told by both MIA and earlier in talking with Jim, that we're really looking at a 30 to 60 day timeline. It looks like they've been able to manage that to go down to about 10 days. So here's where we are. You don't have an event coming up until July 6th. We're going to ask the board, after all of the presentations, to consider putting over our decision on conditions of the license until July 5th. We're going to ask the board to approve, to continue its approval of licenses as long as you get in place by that date, a law enforcement policy that provides the coverage to the town in a form acceptable to you with a deductible acceptable to you. Between now and then, there's a lot more work to do and we've been working very hard on it. Cindy's been, we're working both days drafting agreements, drafting motions, dealing with MIA and as I have with Jim Cobry. So we've all been doing a lot of work and we have made some progress. We are not there yet. We're further along, but we're not there yet. We have drafted and sent to Jim, sent a copy to the town manager also, a possible agreement that we could work out. That's going to depend, the resolution of this is going to depend, we first have to know what kind of a policy we can get, what it's going to cost. I do think I can represent that, that cost, we'll be able to work out the apportionment of the cost of the premium, I'm not talking about the deductible now, in a way that's reasonably reflective of what it would cost us on one side for the town and secondly, what it would cost us because of the stadium. I don't know the impacts of what the new deductible or what the deductible will be that Jim's going to tell you about. There are a lot of moving parts to it that he'll explain, but I don't know the impact once we have in place a policy provided through the stadium's efforts. I don't know the impact of what that would be on MIA except for certain that that $50,000 deductible will go down to 75, but one ought to think that the cost of the policy should also go down since they're no longer primary, since they no longer would be providing primary coverage for the town for stadium events. So the net effect cost wise is hard to calculate at this point. We'll get there, but we're just not there tonight. So I guess I'll stop as that introduction. At the end, I will want to get back and talk to you about a motion that we've drafted. Let me say, I know we're all working hard, but we're getting paid for it and here you are, two nights out of three, so thank you for that.
Cindy, do you have anything to add?
Not at the moment, no, I'm not.
John?
No, the only other thing that, and this is, I think Dick alluded to this, but while we were in the past, we got that, there was the issue of that letter that was accomplished the following morning and sent to Mr. Cobry so that that could be accomplished. And if they can place something within the next 10 days, that is a lot more, that's a lot sooner than we were led to believe by other consultants we had spoken to in the past, including MIA the other day when we spoke to Joe Callahan. He thought 30 days was aggressive. He thought more, it would take more like 60 days. So if something can be placed in time for the first event of July the 6th, that'd be great.
Jim?
If you don't mind, I'd like to set the context of, you know, what we're doing here and what is hopefully going to happen over the next 10 days. The context very briefly is this all started with the Wellner-Dutton protective custody lawsuit. With that lawsuit, we realized that there were some, some gaps, some areas that we could improve upon, mutually improve upon, our indemnification and the town's insurance program. And we spent, and I think when I say we, Dan, John Davis, Cindy, Dick and I started working on this back in December and spent a lot of time in December, January, February, working out a new form of indemnification agreement, which we were able to do. And so by the end of February, we came to an agreement about a new indemnification. And I think it's a very reasonable document and I think it does protect all of us much better from situations like the Wellner-Dutton case. When we finished that, we turned our attention to the insurance protocol and what we could do to improve that. And just so you know what we mean by improve that, the current policy is a $7,500 per person deductible. And with the Wellner-Dutton case, what happens there is each person who is involved in that case, in the event they prevail, and I don't think they will prevail, but in the event they prevail, they're not likely to get more than $7,500, but there are a lot of them. There are potentially thousands of plaintiffs in that case. And so if, if it is certified as a class and you do get 1,000 plus plaintiffs, all establishing damages in the, you know, $7,500 range, you have a very substantial liability there that's not covered by insurance, that would be part of your existing deductible. And I think we all agree that there should be some room there to improve that coverage. And so starting in early March, we, we started really working pretty hard to figure out what we could do to improve that. And the first step in the process was to find out if we could improve our insurance policy. And so right now, we provide you with additional insured coverage under our general liability policy. And what that does plain and simple is if you are involved in any type of litigation or claim that is the, that is the result of our acts or omission, or people that we controls acts or omission, then you would presumably have coverage under our insurance policy. What it doesn't do is cover you for acts and omissions that your employees or your agents, people that we don't control, would result in liability. And so step number one was to find out if we could change our general liability insurance policy to extend the coverage to include your employees, the police officers in this case. And our insurance consultant, a gentleman named Mike Norick, he went ahead and contacted our insurer and the insurer said no, that they would not do it. And so we reported that back and so, and that obviously was not acceptable. So we started to check with other insurance companies and see if we could change insurers and get a better insurance policy. And Mike approached a number of insurance companies, all of whom said basically the same thing, they are not inclined to do that. And the reason they're not inclined to do it is because they would be in a situation where they would be insuring some folks activities and we have no control over them. And the lack of control was something that they really, all of these insurance companies uniformly had difficulty with. And so with that information, I came back to the group and we started talking about other ways of resolving this issue. And so the next approach was for our insurance consultant to try to identify opportunities for a town purchased law enforcement professional liability insurance policy, or I'm sorry, for us to purchase a law enforcement professional insurance liability covering the activities of the town police force. And we're not able to do that, it's the same reason, because we don't control them. So we thought about, could we get a separate policy that the town would purchase and we would pay for? We're getting a little warmer with that one, but quite frankly, the insurance companies came back and said they'd prefer to have one policy covering the town as opposed to two policies. If there are two policies, one covering activities at Gillette Stadium and the other covering the rest of the town, the insurers had a concern that there would be what's called the other insurance clause issue where the insurance companies effectively point at each other and each, each tries to suggest the other one should really be the primary insurer. So, long story, but we eventually settled on the idea that we would try to find a better alternative to your existing MIA insurance policy and then we would work out some arrangement to allocate the premium associated with that policy. And our insurance consultant informally, because we weren't authorized to do anything officially on your behalf, but informally, he went out and contacted insurance companies and he found three that are active in Massachusetts who were willing to provide that coverage. And they each had a slightly different variant and you all are familiar with insurance and you know there's premiums and deductibles and self-insurance and every flavor you can possibly imagine. But we found three companies and they were willing to do something and it seemed like a, each of them offered something that could be interesting to us collectively. So we spoke with Dick Gellerman and Kevin Pagos and the timeframe of this is roughly April timeframe. And we basically said, hey, if, if you can give us a letter that authorizes our consultant, Mike Norick, to review your loss data and also to talk officially with these insurance companies, we will be able to get these informal discussions reduced to formal proposals, which we can present to the town manager and whomever else. And then collectively, we can decide which insurance product we want to go forward with. We did not receive that letter. We asked for it a number of times, including, you know, by email, including in meetings. You know, we had a meeting at Town Hall in Kevin Pagos's office in mid-May where I emphasized to Kevin that, you know, we were six weeks away from, from what I consider to be a deadline, you know, June 30th, end of policy deadline, and I really needed the letter to allow us to get the alternatives reduced to writing so we could resolve this issue. I indicated to Kevin at that time that six weeks was really a pretty short period of time for us to evaluate proposals, first of all, to obtain proposals, then evaluate them and then bind the insurance policy. So I was pretty emphatic that we really needed to get something pretty quickly. And at that meeting, Kevin told me that he would, that he understood the deadline, understood how important it was to get the authorization letter. And I thought we were going to receive something very shortly thereafter. We did not. And I, I reminded him of that, I, you know, reminded Dick that I needed to get that letter. I didn't get the letter until yesterday and I received the letter yesterday because Dick and Cindy and John really put a lot of effort into getting the letter for us. And so yesterday was really the first time when we were able to have our insurance consultant go out there and touch the bases and really try to get what we had previously discussed 60 days ago into a more formal position. He, he's working very, very hard on it as all of us are working very hard on it. Originally, this morning, he told me that this was not even possible to do in less than 30 days. Told me I was being too demanding, that this was just completely nuts on my part to think that we could make it in time for the Revolution Game. He worked, he worked very hard. Late today, he sent me an email and I don't know all the details of it yet, but he, he thinks that he will be able to get some proposals before the 4th of July and that we will be able to present them to you and hopefully get your approval so that we can have a policy bound before the Revolution Game. But he, I want to emphasize that it's unfortunate it came down to this last minute crisis, it really is. It's not because of the efforts of anyone sitting at this table that it came to this point. I mean, I think all of us were quite proactive and really mindful of the deadline and trying to make sure that it didn't become a crisis. I think that all of us, you know, when it became a crisis, really sprang into action and tried to deal with this as professionally as possible and to get this all resolved. I wish this were not a crisis, to be perfectly frank with all of you, but I think that we are on the cusp of getting it resolved. It's going to require a little bit of luck and a lot more hard work from this group and from Mike Norick, but I'm sincerely hopeful that we can do that. And that's really the background of what, of what we're doing here.
Danny, have you anything to add?
Nothing to add.
Any questions from the board?
Just so I can look at the schedule, the Revolution, the event on the 6th is what, that's the first Revolution Game?
Yes.
That's a Saturday. Fourth of July, holiday. Basically it comes down to the 5th if we go in the direction of putting this off. It's just a very, very tight window, just so we can start to think of that and discussing scenarios.
Okay. Cindy? Anything at this moment?
No, right now.
All right.
Just a couple of questions, trying to understand the current insurance setup. With the law enforcement policy that's currently part of our existing general liability coverage, is that correct?
Yeah, it's part of our general, town's MIA policy, yes.
It's a form to the MIA contract.
Okay. So we have a certain cost to that, to the town right now, correct? Including the law enforcement policy?
Yes.
So if we were to have that policy rewritten where that is no longer included, I would assume there's some change in the overall cost to the town of that hunk of insurance?
Yeah, I think, I think if it were removed entirely, because you have substitute coverage, I imagine there would be an adjustment in the premium. Or if it was kept intact but as sort of an excess law enforcement protection over and above alternative coverage, I would again expect to be some sort of an adjustment to the premium.
Okay.
And I can't speak from MIA, that's just my guess.
Right, right. So what I'm trying to figure out is, you know, a simple formula for calculating this because the impact, you know, certainly we've already made it clear that the $50,000 deductible, we can't do that. So since we have to go this other route in terms of cost now for this new policy, I'm thinking that the delta in our original policy without, which covered us before, we now have a new cost, whatever the delta is, subtract that from the new cost and I think that's one way of thinking about how to potentially address the cost impact.
If I could, calculating the delta is not as simple as taking $50,000 and subtracting $7,500.
No, I'm talking about the policy cost, not the deductibles.
Okay, but, but when you, when you're trying to calculate, and I think you're absolutely right, that's the question, but how do you do the calculation? You do need to look at the premium cost, certainly you need to look at what's the new premium going to cost the town, what's our portion of it? What's the savings on the premium if MIA goes from primary to secondary, or primary to nothing? Those are relatively easy calculations to make. The harder one, for me at least, and we've talked to the active town manager about trying to get some help on this, is how do you calculate the cost to the town from going from a $7,500 per plaintiff, per claim where we are now, deductible, to a $50,000 per occurrence deductible? They're different, the potential impact is hugely different on the town, how do you factor that in? That's one of the issues that we'll certainly have to look at between now and when we see you again on the 5th. But that's an important distinction, I mean, going from per claim to per occurrence is a big distinction for the town. It does, it does limit the overall cost, whereas we don't have that kind of limit now.
I think though, what I'm, the point I'm trying to get at is that if there was not, if there were not these stadium issues and starting with Wellner-Dutton case is really what brought all of us to light, that the town would never be faced with that $50,000 deductible. So...
No, but we have been and we are faced with a $7,500 deductible per plaintiff.
Right, if it's determined to be a class action suit.
Yeah, well, even if not, it, in this case, it's times four, it could easily, without a class action, get to be 7,500, 7,500 times a much bigger number than four, which isn't a class. You do the math, you only have to, it only has to be seven people and then...
I think I understand where I'm coming from and just trying to keep the town whole in terms of, you know, we were existing at a $7,500 deductible because of a certain policy that we had and now because of a changed situation.
Yeah, we're all aware now of the situation that existed for a long time, unfortunately never bothered us in years, which is why we're here. And that's the, that's a solution that we're trying to solve, it's a problem we're trying to solve, in a way that keeps us whole, absolutely.
If I may.
Hold on, what's up?
Just one other general comment, you know, I appreciate you laying out the timeline, Jim, but I think, you know, I see how hard and hear how hard everyone is working right now and I think it's really not fair to throw Kevin under the bus like this and not have him be present to explain why there was a delay. I don't know the details of why there was a delay. I do know that he has been absent for some time and so, you know, everyone at the stable knew that he was absent for that time, so, you know, I just would ask that we dismiss that.
If I may?
Yes.
I started working on this issue with Kevin in March, well before anything happened with respect to Kevin. If at any point during that period of time, he had simply delivered the authorization letter that I sought, we would never have had this crisis. I feel badly that Kevin's not here. I'm here, this is actually my 15th anniversary, my wife is furious that I'm here. But I'm here and he's not. And I'm here because I have respect for this process and I want to get this crisis resolved. And it's undeniable that Kevin could have issued this letter at an earlier point in time. It's also undeniable that if he had, we would have had this resolved a long time ago.
I just think it's unfortunate that no one on the board knew that, that's all.
If I may? I'll get back to that. Dick, you just said multiple plaintiffs, a $7,500 per deductible and there could be many more. I think that's the word I'm hearing out there. If the town was at that kind of a liability risk and this just came about because of the Dutton-Wellner case, why would ever we want to proceed in the future even with that policy if there was going to be a chance that we could have a class action lawsuit down the road at 1,000 people times 7,500 bucks to the point of 7.5 million dollars? And the revenue stream that we receive per year, at that, at two years, I mean, I mean, we're just, it, you know, it's not smart business. Do you, do you agree or disagree?
I think that's right. One of the goals here ought to be to place a limit, a cap, on our exposure for any event that occurs up there, which is our fault. And maybe that's the good thing that'll come out of all of this, is that we'll have accomplished that.
But you don't have the exposure in every town. You have it in so many towns that hold a big venue. Does Mansfield have the same exposure at that venue they hold?
Well, one of the differences, Mark, is that we own the stadium and we own the police force now.
We own...
We don't have the rent on those stadiums.
Well, it seems a fixture, I guess, huh?
So, you know...
But that's, but that's the difference and, and, you know, Jim will tell you, easy solution to the problem and I'm just repeating, but, you know, don't own the police force, have them do their own policing. I'm not suggesting that, that's not a recommendation, there's all kinds of ramifications from that, but, but that is the solution.
So, but a follow-up though, and I made this statement a long time ago, I don't know if anybody remembers, but if the town has a liability because we own the land that's in a lease agreement, why wouldn't we just change that and sell the land and get out from this whole situation? I'm asking, is there any reason why we wouldn't?
Mark, can I suggest that's a totally different topic? We've got a short window to get this thing, that question itself is, I don't think we can begin to talk about that.
One more thing. Jim, you kind of, the ring's got it right, you're throwing the town manager right now under the bus. Do you have any documentary, any document to prove any of this or you just, I mean, I can't take it as hearsay. I can't sit here and listen to hearsay. If you've got something that can prove your point. And if you're going to make statements like that and need to prove, that's what I'm saying.
Well, I stand by my statements. I will happily send you the emails that I have exchanged over the last three months. I know that you were in a meeting with me when I spoke with Kevin, I know that Selectman DeValas was also in a meeting with me and I believe it was at that meeting where Kevin told us that he would issue the letter that week and that he understood the deadline. I mean, we, we discussed what would happen in the crisis situation and what, if anything, we should be doing to protect the town from that crisis. And it was six weeks ago, which wasn't a lot of time and we talked about that, but we, we did talk about it, he did make commitments, you were both there. If I'm wrong, please tell me because I'm, I'm not trying to throw him under the bus. What I am trying to do though is let you know that this group has been working very, very diligently. This group has been very, very focused on the potential crisis that could result if we miss a deadline. I personally made Kevin aware that we don't want to be in that situation. We collectively don't want to be in a crisis situation. We want to have this insurance issue resolved as early in the process as possible and we didn't. We haven't. We're sitting here today on the 27th of June in crisis mode and it didn't have to be that way. But I will send Dick Gellerman the emails that I have and hopefully he'll provide them with you. But I really do go back to that meeting we had in May that you were both at and, and we did talk about this issue and we did talk about what needed to be done and Kevin did make commitments to all of us that he would do the authorization letter at a minute. If he had done it back then, we would have had the proposals very, you know, very, you know, a week later, 10 days later, we would have probably had this meeting in early June, we would have decided upon a particular insurance course of action and we would never have the crisis that we have right now. them with you, but I really do go back to that meeting we had in May that you were both at, and, and we did talk about this issue, and we did talk about what needed to be done, and Kevin did make commitments to all of us that he would do the authorization letter at a minimum. If he had done it back then, we would have had the proposals very, you know, very, you know, a week later, 10 days later, we would have probably had this meeting in early June, we would have decided upon a particular insurance course of action, and we would never have the crisis that we have right now. And that's not throwing someone, someone under the bus, but that is a statement of fact, and it is about accountability.
Jim, you are.
Yeah, again, caution the board, and I understand Kevin's not here, the meeting that we were at, and please understand, Kevin is working for the town, he's meeting with you on your issue, he's also meeting with Maya, he's meeting with the, dealing with the Weldon Dutton case, and he's looking at the town as a whole. So to jump out of that meeting and say that he's going to do something without considering all the other facets that he's dealing with, again, if Kevin's not here, I just wish we get off this subject and focus on, today is the 27th, we've got an event on the 6th, all this stuff I'm sure is going to fall out one way or the other, because nobody wants to be in crisis mode, but if we're going to focus for the next hour on whose fault it was, this is a little bit of uncharted territory, we've got class action suit, we've got a stadium with events coming up, and if we don't stop working together and stop pointing the fingers, especially when the third party's not here, we're going to be spinning a lot of wheels right now. So if we want to get this thing resolved for an event next Saturday, let's talk about what our options are. Now, we've spoken about, you know, individual claims versus claims in aggregate, if there's different options out there, and if we can get, you know, maybe, you know, the good news about that it's crisis mode, because people work extra diligently because there's a deadline in a couple of days versus a couple of months, you know, we've got to work together on this starting tonight, and if we don't, I mean, basically we have one day, it's the day after the 4th of July, I don't even know who the heck's going to be here that day, so if we don't leave this room tonight with some type of a consensus, I wouldn't be too comfortable about Saturday on the 6th, so.
John?
Yeah, two questions, one is, you had mentioned that the insurance company, mentioned that they would prefer to have one policy, is that the way this is going, or are we going to have an overlay policy on our existing policy?
It's going toward one law enforcement policy covering the town, townwide as well as that stadium.
And to go back to Mark's statement, you know, if the stadium weren't here, Foxborough would just be a sleepy town in the Boston suburbs, with the stadium here, we have these issues. Is there an instrument out there that the insurance companies may provide that could cap our liability to a reasonable level? Because as you mentioned, even at the $7,500, it's still, there's still no limit, and, you know, you take a look at it, and if we were not to prevail in this class action suit, we're still open to a substantial amount of payment which the town would have to bear. So it's reinsurance? Okay, maybe that's the term, but if there's a reinsurance policy that could be an umbrella over the top, that could potentially limit our liability, I think we'd all feel more comfortable, because even the $7,500, it's just the people aren't forever depending on the amount of plaintiffs that come forward.
If I may, Jim, over the past six months, I've actually had the opportunity to learn a lot more about this particular type of insurance than I ever had any entrusted learning, and what I've learned is basically the following, every municipality with a police force buys this law enforcement professional liability insurance, and there are a lot of different ways to buy the insurance. The MEA policy that you buy is one way, and what I mean by one way, your deductible is based upon a per claimant, so every, the Weldon or Dutton case is a wonderful example, every person who is wrongly placed into protective custody has a potential claim for you, and the first $7,500 of each one of those claims is for your account, not for the insurer's account. So that's one way to do this. Another way to do it, and I actually have a copy of a policy here, that's also in place in Massachusetts and used by a lot of municipalities, is to do it on a per wrongful event basis. And if that were the case, and, you know, if that policy were in place when the Weldon or Dutton claimants came into being, what would happen is each one of those, those people would be part of the same wrongful event, and they would all fall within the deductible. And the deductibles on those policies are generally speaking, and once again, I'm a lawyer, not an insurance consultant, but what I've learned over the last six months is the deductibles on those per wrongful event policies are usually 25,000 to 50,000, and obviously higher deductibles generally result in lower premiums and vice versa. There are a lot of variance on those, but those are in general the ways to do it, and so municipalities that have a concern about overall exposure, as you just expressed, they like to go for the per wrongful event where you have a cap, and then they decide how much of a premium tolerance they have, and they decide whether to buy a $25,000 cap or a $50,000 cap. I understand further that MEA has been evolving their, their law enforcement coverage to a higher deductible, that you have had the good fortune of keeping the lower deductible for an extended period of time, and, you know, that's part of what's going on here, there's a little bit of an anachronism going on with respect to your policy, to your benefit. But I think the alternatives that we will be able to get will show you that spectrum, and you'll be able to choose where on the risk premium spectrum you want to be. And I will also offer the gratuitous comment that when I first looked at your policy, I thought that I would personally prefer to have the per wrongful event coverage, because I like the catastrophic protection that you get in that circumstance. You know, when, when you have a $50,000 wrongful event coverage, you're not ever looking at millions of dollars of exposure, you may be looking at more nuisances that you prefer not to deal with, but you never get into a situation like Weldon or Dutton where you suddenly have potentially a million dollars of exposure.
John?
I'll set text.
Bob, you have any?
If I may, to try to address your issue, Mr. Gray, the per person cap, the per person deductible, I'm not sure whether there is a mechanism, but I have heard of insurers that have said the, there is a per person deductible, but up to a maximum deductible. So whether it's five persons or 10 claimants, I've heard of insurers that do that, I don't know whether that is an option under the Maya policy or under the policies of any of the other insurers that Attorney Coburn is speaking to. Wrongful events, yeah, I'm aware that, I mean, GL policies have per occurrence limits, professional liabilities have wrongful events limits, and I can appreciate that that can be, you know, for the catastrophic loss, a better protection for someone, an insured like the town of Foxborough. I think we have to appreciate here that, at least with respect to the Weldon or Dutton case, the claimants, there are four, currently four plaintiffs, counsel for the, the four plaintiffs has said that there may be in excess of 2,700, and they're talking about more than just one event. So they're talking about the Bruce Springsteen concert, Country Fest events, Patriots games, so I'm not quite sure how many, when they, when they say 2,700, I'm not quite sure how many events they're talking about. The higher deductible, I appreciate that the Maya contract right now is at a 7,500, my understanding was that the rationale for increasing it to 50,000 was that the protection that both the town and Maya thought was in place, wasn't, turned out not to be in place. So that's why it's going up to 50,000, and it was conditioned upon, that it would stay at 7,500 if alternative insurance was in place. And I don't know to get to, whether it makes more sense, frankly, to eliminate the Maya law enforcement policy entirely, or have it as excess law enforcement coverage over whatever the other alternative policy is, I don't know.
Well, of course, I was just trying to find out what the mechanics could be.
Right, right, right.
So, so potentially you could structure it that if the town kept that existing law enforcement policy in place, that that could apply to all town-related events, and then this other policy could strictly cover stadium-related events?
I would think so, I mean, I'm not an insurance consultant as well, but I've, I always thought that there could be a way to define stadium event in such a way that the, the new policy covers stadium events, and the Maya policy covers non-stadium events, and they agree to a common definition so that nothing falls in cracks.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else on the board? This point? Bob, anything to add?
I'm just sensitive to the timeframe, as Jim already mentioned, we have a very few days to try to apply for a policy, I understand that's the beginning of the process, correct?
Yes.
And, you know, tomorrow's Friday, you get the weekend, and you have 4th of July on Thursday, and you would need to plan another meeting.
On the 5th.
On the 5th, so just.
How long are you going to be in town on the 5th?
So those are the issues that you're dealing with, you just be, you just have to be aware of, you know, the time limitations.
I can't, there's no way I can be here on the 5th, Jim's too, anybody else going on the 5th? I mean, something with the whole board needs to be together, John, you?
I'm around. The other issue is, if you recall, the events that we permitted are contingent upon an indemnification agreement being reached by June 30th, so come July 1st, it's a potential that those permits are null and void, so we would have to have an extension tonight, or up till, I guess Friday, to extend it up till July 4th, 5th, 6th, whenever we do that.
I have an anticipation, I drafted a motion for you, but, but look, the two of you are going to be away on the 5th.
Yeah. We're supposed to be away right now.
Let us look into a way of doing a, I don't know that we can do this, are you available by phone or by?
It's not allowed by a lot of us anyway, so it's just.
They didn't adopt that provision, you know, the open meeting.
They voted not to have, it's not permitted. So, I think you got to Wednesday, unfortunately.
Wednesday, what's the date of?
Well, we've got five people on the board, we have a quorum of three.
Yeah, but it's just not right for the whole board not to be here, I just think this is something the whole board, especially what you, we all have to offer, needs to be together as one, and I just don't see that, I wouldn't want that to happen, I mean.
So, can we go in the direction of having the two separate policies, stadium definition, town definition, see if that works with Maya and whoever the, I guess, whatever the other potential insurers are, and that way we know.
We wouldn't cancel the, you're saying not cancel the Maya policy, the problem being that right now we can't tell you if the Maya policy is effective, whether or not you're going to be exposed to the $50,000 deductible.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but if the Maya policy will be in effect.
It will be.
However, it'll be subject to a $50,000 deductible.
For stadium events, which isn't a problem until July 6th.
Correct.
So, exactly, I said this at the other meeting, why can't the town cover that deductible until we get this straightened out? It's the simplest way of getting this through.
Because we're unwilling to do so, it's not, it's not our responsibility, if you think about it for a moment here. We, we made application for an event, and you rightfully said there are some conditions, one of which is that we need to have police details for these events, and that's fine, we're happy to have police details, we're happy to pay the detail rate for them. You are the ones who obtained the law enforcement professional liability insurance, we obtained the general liability insurance, we cannot, you know, we, I said earlier, that our consultant has gone out there and tried to find any way possible for us to buy law enforcement professional liability insurance on your police force, and we cannot, we just simply cannot do it, it's, it's just impossible. For the exact same reason that an insurance company won't issue that policy, we can't do the indemnity. We don't have control over the individuals that we would be asked to indemnify, and the delta, the delta between 7,500 and 50,000 is a lot of money, I mean, you'd be talking about, you know, hundreds of millions of dollars of potential exposure over people that we don't have any control. So what you're asking, I understand, that's something that we've all thought about, if there were a way to do it, we would certainly do it, but it's, it's just too much money with too little control, it just, it won't work.
And that's exactly why we're here, because we can't deal with that either. Well, and we're dealing with it right now.
Mark, one suggestion I have in terms of trying to get us to the 5th is.
Well, the 5th is out as far as I'm concerned, because I can't be here, Jim can't be here.
Well, I'm two and a half hours away, if it's a meeting, I'll drive back, it's.
If I can, twist that for a second, Mark, is the upper meeting law does not prohibit you from talking to me, and you, you talking to me and what your thoughts are, I can't share that, so it's sequential, I can't say, I can't tell the rest of the board, is what Mark thinks is what, but I can listen. If there were a meeting on the 5th, at that meeting, I can express on behalf of what you're both thinking, hopefully there'll be some information to respond to, is a way to resolve this so that there can be a meeting, you have a quorum on the 5th, I can present at that meeting, an open meeting for the first time to your colleagues, what you're thinking, what you're thinking on this.
It's going to be hard to tell you what I'm thinking when I don't know the conversation that's going to come forward.
Yep, that's, that's a limitation, Mark.
You know what? I say go for the 3rd, that's what I say, I think, you know what, you try to work it and you'll be here, and you need to do it by the 3rd. I want to be here, I think, everybody hears a must, this board works well together, everybody has, you know, good insight and good input to put into conversation. So, Randy, would you like to say something?
I'm just curious about the procurement rules that will apply here, is that another stumbling block for us here or not? You know, bid process, is the policy going to be over $25,000, is it subject to a bid? Because is the town paying for the policy?
Yeah, then it has to go to open bid. John, correct?
Yep.
All right, so that's, that makes it impossible right there, is that what we're saying?
If the town is purchasing it.
Yeah, and is that what you're saying, the town would have to purchase it?
We cannot purchase it.
So that, right there, we're done.
Didn't we just get a, a new policy from MEA?
Yes.
This was one of the.
And the town manager followed the bid process.
So that public bid process was adhered to, this would be an addenda or an amendment to that, is that?
We set the policy, correct?
And Maya get.
A different insurance company.
Yeah.
Maya will not be the insurance company on a standalone policy.
Has anyone seen the, the bidding, the heartbeat for that?
Well, it's a 30-day procurement, right?
I don't know what it's.
Randy, help me out here, this is what you do, you help do.
That's a minimum.
Yeah, I think that's.
Minimum 30 days.
Is it over $25,000?
Well, it's absolutely going to be over $25,000.
My, my understanding is it will be roughly between $30,000 and $50,000 of premium, that's.
That puts us out of the realm right there.
Well, could, could we do a policy for six months and then do another six-month policy? Just to get it under the, you know.
That's kind of really stretched.
Nice thought, but I think that's a little off.
There is one piece of legislation.
Yes, Randy.
There is one piece of legislation that's pending, I'm not sure how it's doing, to raise those limits to 50,000, I could check on that.
Yeah, I don't think, I don't think the legislature's meeting over the holidays, are they?
No, but I mean, you know, this session would end, you know, this week, I'm not sure if that's one of the bills that's been.
Running to another roadblock.
I'll check on it.
Thank you for your input, Randy. You guys want, want to take a five-minute break and think about this, or you want to just sit here and muddle the thoughts?
Muddling sounds good, yeah. You know, I, I look at the issue and I say the, the MEA policy as it's going to take effect on July 1st with the $50,000 per person, I understand your concern about that, that is the same concern that I have about, about this, so I certainly share your concern on that one. We are trying our best to make this happen, and I, and everyone is at this table, it's not, it's not an effort on my part or Dan's part, it's a universal effort on this side of the table. It may be that it's just going to take longer than next week to get this done, to comply with all the laws, rules, et cetera. I go back to what I said before, when you approved the event license, you were acting within your statutory power to impose conditions related to public health and safety, and one of the conditions that you imposed was that a police detail take effect. The problem that we have right now is that the insurance for your police detail is unacceptable in terms of the risk.
Are we really going to go down this road, Jim?
Which is what?
That you don't want us to have our police officers here?
No, I wouldn't suggest we privately secure them, but if, if, and I throw this out, and I don't offer any criticism whatsoever, but if your risk. I don't offer any criticism whatsoever, but if your risk profile is such that for 30 days or so you can't do it, I would be willing to go talk to Lieutenant Stewart and see if he could provide the police presence that you very legitimately request under the event license for the 6th of July, and until such time as we get this.
And I'll have 350 grievances on my desk on Monday morning.
How are the state police insured?
If I might, we have a town bylaw that does not allow for that. It states that the chief of police, Foxborough Chief of Police is in charge of public safety in town, excluding, you know, state highway.
Yeah. And it's just an idea. Well, you know what, that's.
That's a solution.
I don't know what we're gonna do, I mean, at this point.
The disagreement that we're having.
It's $50,000 per occurrence.
Yeah, but it's over a contingency, it may or may not occur, right? It may or may not occur. We disagree with Craft Organization as to who ought to be responsible for that cost, should we have that cost. We may never have that cost, that would be nuts. A thought is that we continue to disagree about that issue, and hope it doesn't happen. If it does happen, it's a thought is, you issue the licenses and you put in the provision that if there is a deductible imposed upon the town, a cost to the town of $50,000 for something that occurs, that that is a 42,500 of that, or some number is payable by the Craft Organization.
I've been asking for that and they declined.
But let me finish, they're gonna say, they're gonna say no, and, but they could say, if we reached agreement, they could say, we don't agree with that condition, we're gonna accept it, not file any litigation today over it, but accept that with the understanding that in the event that that does occur, they reserve their rights to challenge that provision. That's a possible solution. What we're doing is.
I know, if I could interrupt you, owning a business, I have this thing called, workers' compensation liability nonparticular taxation. If I don't pay those, they send a notice to everybody I do business with, and they cancel it, and I'm out of business till it's reinstated. I can't operate without insurance, it's against the law.
I'm not saying you operate without insurance, we go forward with insurance. We have the policy in effect. Policy says that if there's a, if there's a claim arising out of a stadium event, there's gonna be a $50,000 deductible. What I'm saying to you is, there may not be such a thing, I mean, keep in mind that there hasn't been very many, and even with Weldon Dutton, there's no clear evidence that there even is one today. So we're talking about a potentiality that we, that experience tells us doesn't happen very much. We're not, Jim and I have, I guess in the year that I've been working with him for the first time, we're pretty raw with one another, okay? We're not, my sense is, we're just not gonna reach agreement on that. What I'm saying is that you issue your licenses, you impose the condition, they don't agree with the condition, but they accept the license, they don't run into court this week and say, unlawful condition, they say, we'll accept it, but we're gonna reserve our rights in the event that it ever comes to be that there is a $50,000 deductible that we have to face. At that time, if it happens, we litigate it. It's a simple enough thing to litigate, and we either win or we lose, but it only is for so long as we can get ourselves the kind of policy that we should have gotten before tonight.
But is it responsible for us to expose the taxpayer to that sort of claim? I think we could sleep at night.
On Monday morning.
Hold on now, you have been exposed, you have been exposed.
I'm trying to avoid from being exposed any further, Dick.
I understand that, but you have been exposed to much more money than that, and whatever you do, you're gonna have some exposure for a deductible, for an insurance policy, you are, you always have, and you will again. What that number is, we're trying to limit, but I, you know, I don't think you're being irresponsible for doing that. One might argue, one might argue that it's more responsible to have a $50,000 deductible than $7,500 if it's for a short period of time, and we can go to an occurrence basis.
Dick, that would be fine if it was an occurrence basis, but it's not now. The exposure is multiple millions of dollars, and, you know, we're a municipality, we're not a full profit business, so I just don't know how you could expect the board to accept that as a solution.
I don't think our stockholders are likely to much. I see John raising his hand.
I've not spoken with Mr. Norr, your consultant, but if the Crafts have civil rights coverage, because they have civil rights exposure, so I assume the Craft Organization would have civil rights coverage, is there no way that the town can be added as an additional insured to the Crafts' policy that provides them civil rights coverage as the named insured?
I've asked that question several times, and the answer's always been no, that because we don't have control over your officers, we cannot extend the coverage in that circumstance. If you'd like to give us control over your officers, it would happen automatically, but I don't think anyone wants that to happen.
I think that's abused on bylaws, we've gone over that, that's against the law, a couple of other things are against the law, procurement thing would be against the law.
But then what was contemplated when the Crafts agreed to provide the town with civil rights coverage?
Well, I think now you're trying to position me, so I respectfully will decline to.
Okay, okay. Well, sorry, we're stealing my head, aren't we? Anybody else got any?
So we never have civil rights coverage?
Once again, I think you're trying to position me.
I'm not.
No, no, I don't think you are.
Well, we licensed events at the stadium, and we had the motion attached to it that if insurance coverage was not, I mean, if the insurance issue had not, was not cleared by June 30th, then the town, Foxborough, has the right to take back that license and not have, you know, not have, not license that yet. So, it was very clear, it was very clear when we did vote that, that that was a possibility if this insurance issue was not resolved.
If I may, the license conditions require us, it's condition three, require us to obtain an insurance certificate with certain details. We have obtained that insurance certificate, and we've provided it to the town, and we have received no word back that the, that the insurance certificate is acceptable or not acceptable. So, at this point in time, I think that you're right, that you did require us to obtain insurance, and you set it forth in the terms and conditions that were attached to the license, and we think that we've given you an insurance certificate that complies with what's in those terms and conditions. We think that what's been going on here is that you're looking for additional coverage because of the change in deductible from the MIA policy, and we're happy to work with you, we really are, and we're really trying very, very hard to deliver some alternatives to help you on that, but that's really the nature of what we're doing here. It's not so much us failing to obtain the coverage that we can reasonably obtain, it's that the time for obtaining the coverage that gives you the right risk profile is just, you know, closing so rapidly, that's.
And I appreciate that, but the thing is, we cannot let the town be on the hook in case something happens. So, I mean, we're responsible, and I don't want to expose the town of Foxborough to the $50,000 deductible, just in case something does happen.
It seems the only way out of this in a temporary basis, and I think the board pretty much stands together on this, is that the deductible be covered, if it needs to be, by the Craft Organization. I think it's the only out, I think we beat it up pretty good here. If you want to take a couple minutes, like I said, take a recess and think about it.
We don't, we don't have to, we cannot accept that.
And you're asking us to do something you don't accept.
I'm not.
Mark, could I take a break and talk to Jim for a minute or two?
Take a break. Frank, hold us up for about 10 minutes, please. Be right back. Okay, we're back, thanks for waiting. Dick, do you have anything to add?
I do. What, I guess we're gonna ask you to do is to put this over until July 3rd, when, hopefully by that date, we'll have more concrete information for you. We will do this in a way that does not require a procurement by the town, so we avoid any 30B issues, or we'll do it in a way that is in compliance with chapter 30B, depending on the numbers.
You do realize that July 3rd is?
Wednesday before July 3rd.
Well, no, it's a lot, a lot of. Did you say you're not here the 3rd? Did you say you're there?
Well, I'm not supposed to be, but if I have to be, I will be.
I mean, there's nothing they can do about the date.
Well, I understand that, but what time are you planning to have this meeting, it's not gonna be a seven or eight o'clock meeting, it's gonna be more like a four or five or six o'clock meeting, because it's gonna go two hours, and.
Mark, is five o'clock okay with the board?
Five o'clock okay with the board? Jim, are you here or are you gone?
I'm here now.
Well, you don't, you know.
Let's set it for five, let's just, but can you give us a?
If you're not at the status quo, you're not gonna be prepared for the meeting, we're just.
No, but I don't, I don't wanna go in coming back on the 3rd without having an understanding of what direction you might be taking or going.
Yeah, I mean, in order to avoid the exposure of $50,000 per claim.
I got, I told him he can't be here since 5:30, 6:00.
Oh, can't he?
The guy filming, we don't even know where we're gonna be, we don't know if we have a room, we don't know.
We're saying the FCA wouldn't be able to be ready for us till 6:30, that's.
Right. And we don't even know where we can have it yet.
Does it have to be recorded?
There's nobody calling on Wednesday, right? So town hall's open, Randy?
Does it have to be recorded?
Does it, well, I think the people deserve the right to see it, I mean, it's.
But if it's posted, they can come.
Yeah, well, we don't intend to have, it won't occupy the rooms, it'd be over 70 people, and then you can't have the meeting anyways, so, I mean.
Mark, 6 o'clock before 4th of July, there's gonna be five people.
He's gonna be there, perhaps.
Actually, Jim, you know, I appreciate that, but after some of the conversation we had here tonight, I think you might see 35 police officers there, if not some other towns.
Let's circle back to the.
Yeah, I mean, one of the solutions we discussed was not having the police, other than what's been done all these years, continue, that's not what we're talking about. The reason to go to July 3rd is we hopefully will have more concrete information about the type of policy. We will do it within the procurement law, and by that I mean, it will not, is not a, it's not, we're not gonna purchase, and the town will not be expending its funds for this policy, and we will try to address, I mean, the whole goal is to try to address not having the town exposed to multiple $50,000 deductibles.
Randy, would you like to speak?
How do we, I thought, I heard Mr. Cobre say that they weren't allowed to purchase insurance on the town's behalf.
The act was, we are not gonna purchase, not gonna use any public funds for this acquisition. You get a gift. We have to work those.
Yeah, but if it is a gift, doesn't it have to also be accepted by the police?
Look, there's a lot of things that have to be figured out and ascertained and determined between now and July 3rd, okay? You can't do that sitting here tonight. We have a procurement issue, if we can't address it, then we won't, but give us the opportunity to do so. You know, we've got a commitment that they'll pay for it, we just have to figure out a way that they can do so legally, so we're not looking to a procurement.
Anybody have anything to add?
And if that is a scenario that works, so be it, we'll go in that direction, but just so I'm clear, we have MIA coverage up until June 30th, under the 7.5, $7,500 per claim. We've already signed and sent in money.
I don't know about that.
We have. For the new coverage, starting July 1st, so we're covered throughout. Is there an opportunity for either the coverage that ends on June 30th to extend it another month, and work out there where it's not a procurement issue, it's less than 10% of a change, and you can extend it till, to July 30th on the existing, or take the coverage that's gonna start on July 1st, and change it for the first two months, so the premiums are gonna come up, the deductibles will come down, and that, that one month or two months to bring it through July or August, would be something that we address on a cash value?
I asked that, I'll ask it again, but we've already asked and we turned not, those questions.
You asked it to MIA?
Yes.
In the conference call that we had with Joe Callahan the other day, that was addressed, and he said no.
Yeah, at least the second part of that, whether they would give us a 30-day policy, I don't know.
Yeah.
But would they, would they give us the 75, but at a higher premium for two months? No, he said they wouldn't do that.
Okay, well, I need, thank you.
I have a question about the civil rights coverage after July 1st, and the certificates that we have received, you know, that we have, you know, with conditions on, that everything has to be acceptable to the town, and, you know, there's language that's different on here from prior years' certificates, and I don't see the language that says civil rights coverage on here, so I just wanted to ask where that comes in on this policy, on this binder.
I don't know what document you have in front of you.
This is the document that comes with the applications from the stadium for the license, the certificate of liability.
It's the binder that you provided with your application?
Right.
That was on there before?
This is part of, this is pulled from the Country Fest application.
The new one?
The new one.
Was it on there before, on the previous?
This was part of the application that we said we would license subject to if we have.
Oh, no, I understood, the part about the civil rights, was that on there before, and it got taken away, is that what you're saying?
I didn't see it there before. Jim is not acknowledging whether it existed or not, so I wanna know going forward, does it exist now? And then I'd also like to ask John if you could review the prior binders to this binder, just if that's something that we could.
Is that on there?
Yeah. For these events that we're talking about right now. Does that make sense? Okay, thank you.
I will ask Mike Norr, if you don't mind, to tell me where that's in this certificate. There's a new certificate that we've provided that I can certainly send over to you as well.
That's been sent over since the application process?
Yes, we, traditionally, June 30th is the time when insurance policies roll over, and ours doesn't wait, so we sent you a new certificate to show that we have insurance coverage effective July 1st. Just sent that in on the past Tuesday. So, I will tell you this, I don't read these insurance certificates very often, I apologize for that, but we do have civil rights coverage, where it shows up on that certificate, I don't know, and I will ask Mike to point out to me where it is. The, the issue that John was raising before is, is it civil rights coverage that covers the Kraft Group? And its employees, et cetera, or does that coverage extend to the town? And it's, it's a very nuanced answer that would probably bore you, and I...
Not really. We, we need, we need to know, because it's just a black and white question.
Jim, can you also ask him, say, I want that that certificate, unless the known is different, that covers acts of the name insured, which being the Kraft Group? So that, to me, would exclude actions of the police, the Foxborough Police, so that doesn't really cover what we're talking about here.
And that's different.
Well, uh, please allow me, I, I'm not an insurance lawyer by any stretch of the imagination, but what I understand from talking to Mike Norick in particular, but also some other people, is, is basically the following, that we have fairly robust insurance coverage, given the nature of our fairly diverse business portfolio. And we have a, we have general liability insurance, uh, property insurance, all those different things that you expect. Within the liability portion of our, of our insurance coverage, we have civil rights coverage. We also have, as part of our overall insurance regime, standard endorsements that relate to, among other things, additional insurance coverage. And our endorsement that deals with additional insured coverage says, in essence, and please, once again, I'm, I'm well outside of my expertise here, but what I understand it says is, as an additional insured, you are covered in the event that we, or people who work for us, or over whom we have control, do something that generates liability or the threat of liability. So a good example of this is when we are the tenant and the landlord, who is purely passive, you know, doesn't do anything but leases us space. When our employees do something that generates liability, and the landlord gets sued as part of that, even though the landlord has done nothing, uh, because they are our additional insured in that case, our coverage is extended to them because it's an action or omission of our employee that gave rise to that coverage. So we have that type of coverage, and it's, it's routinely extended to our additional insureds. And you are one of the additional insureds, so you have that level of coverage. Uh, where the, the great minds at this table diverge is whether our coverage should extend to also include the acts or omissions of your employees. And our policy does not, as far as I know, does not go that far. And, uh, that's one of the lengthy discussions that John and I have had over the past six months.
Yeah, I got one too. Um, you all set, Mark? What's the next event after the 6th?
On Jovi, on the 12th.
On the 12th?
By the 20th.
The 20th.
I don't know if...
The 20th, 12th.
Dale Swift is the 20th.
I've heard...
Jovi's the 20th. Dale Swift's the 26th, 27th.
I've heard over and over again that there's never any situation at any soccer game. That they're very low-key.
They are.
Very well, under 20,000 people, typically around 15. It's a very uneventful event. So why don't you just, you know...
You should be in marketing.
Mark is not going to market.
I'm trying to give a point here.
Comes with us for sleep.
Mark, why don't you, can we just work and come back on the 3rd of July?
No. I really don't want him. Because you're interrupting everybody's family lives here, and it's, it's becoming troublesome. And maybe everybody here's got a family, and they've got things they wanna do, and to over-dedicate yourself during that causes situations with your family. And it's not fair to the spouse, it's not fair to the kids, been looking forward to things for a long time, including your own, I'm sure. My solution here, that I wanna see happen is you've stated, you've all stated soccer events, we should just have it, don't worry about it, license a soccer event, there's never any issues at it. Free up the fourth for everybody, pony up the deductible for that one event, gives you another 14 days to work through this. If everybody says it's no ever any problem at it, cover the deductible for that one event. It gives you another four, more than 14 days to come through with a plan here. That's all you gotta do.
Unfortunately, we can't do that.
Well, you can ask your boss.
No, no, I, believe me, I hear from him quite a bit.
'Cause, you know, it's just, it, it, I don't see it happening any other way. It gives you more time, you're pressuring everybody here at the board. I mean, you really are. You got, Jimmy has plans, Jim's away for the week, I'm gone on Friday. You know, if my boss asks me to work, I tell him no. You know what I'm saying? It's what, I just think it's not unfair thing to do. I understand the urgency in your aspect, but to pony up the deductible for one soccer event, to come through with that and free up everybody, give everybody ample time to get this straightened out, doesn't seem like a lot to ask me.
If, if I may, I mean...
Yeah.
We, we just can't do that, is what it comes down to, and, and, um, I hope you can understand that. I certainly understand the inconvenience, and I don't want anyone here to be inconvenienced by any stretch of the imagination. If I could figure out another way, I certainly would. But unfortunately, we just, as relatively common as the soccer matches are, we just are not in the insurance business, is what it comes down to.
But we are insured. All you do is cover the deductible in writing for that one event, it gives everybody almost three weeks to get through this. I don't think it's a lot to ask. Have, you look at the history of the events, have you ever had any problems? 'Cause I'm about to make a motion in that aspect to the board, and I'm hoping they go with me on it. Because I really don't want this to go into next week. I, I just don't think, I think it's a lot to ask. We've done it before on Christmas, we've had to have major, you know, meetings. The two days after Christmas, it's not, it's not general policy for the board to just make special meetings for everybody. This board has been ample to everybody that's ever asked for one. And I'm not asking you just to go back to your boss and ask their question. That's all. I don't think it's too much to ask. Gives everybody more time. It's one event, the most under, um, custody event of them all, right? There's hardly any custodies at them.
Hardly any.
Right. It's the same group of people, it's not a chaotic kind of atmosphere where it's a mixed group of people that go there once a year or whatever. It's a different entity of people. So, that's wrong. What do you think, John?
Well, you're asking them to self-insure.
No, I'm not asking them to self-insure. I'm asking...
I agree.
We're looking for a solution. The, waiting till the 5th, I'm not sure what's gonna come out of it. It's unknown.
Nothing. I can guarantee right now, nothing will come out of it.
And we're talking about the 3rd, not the 5th?
Yeah, we're talking about the 3rd.
And, you know, I, I, I wouldn't be certain that nothing will come out of it. I think something might. I mean, I understand the inconvenience to the board. I wouldn't be suggesting we go to the 3rd if I thought it was a waste of time. But I haven't seen the convenience to it.
It's not just the board. It's a lot more people than just the board. It's cable access, it's the talent, I can tell you, it's the finance department, it's all the people that work for the town. It's, it's, it's tripling down. I just don't see that there's a big issue with that, for that one event. And I'm gonna be adamant about it.
And if you allow me to be adamant, I, those events are relatively, relatively common. Another way to address this issue is for you to lessen the police detail requirement at that event.
Does how many police have that?
No, but what...
Football game, no.
If I could, uh, you could say, for that one event, we are gonna allow the stadium to, to provide their own security, and if something happens, we call Chief O'Leary and get people to come down. Just, I mean, that happens a lot. I mean, where you allow people, you know, other license holders like, uh, liquor license holders in town don't always have to have police details at their bars. Sometimes they do.
Over 350 people, you need to have a police detail.
But other times, they don't. And, and so it's within your power to say, recognizing that soccer games are relatively benign, uh, and recognizing that this is an extraordinary circumstance, we're gonna allow you to go forward with your team ops force. But it doesn't go on beyond that day, number one, and number two, if something happens, you have to call Chief O'Leary and, and...
Now we're back to bylaws, right?
Correct.
I have to disagree with you, but it's really not even up to the sport, it's up to the chief of police. And he has made a very clear, uh, his policy on security of the stadium.
Could, could we ask Chief O'Leary if he could grant some grace on this one?
And then he was here, and he has stepped up.
Oh, hasn't he, sorry?
Once again, we'll have about 35 grievances on our table on Monday morning, if not before that, and probably tomorrow morning.
I'm simply trying to help.
Well, I am too. And I think the board is.
How many police officers are there usually at the stadium on a soccer event?
About 25?
It's really pretty small, yeah.
It's, it's very small, not like 350 for a football game or more. Or concerts sometimes more than 350, right?
We shouldn't be talking about the numbers.
Well, no, I'm just trying to figure out what type of numbers we're talking about.
I, I really don't think that's relevant, because the chief is in charge of security, and he is not gonna agree to this.
Right.
He's just not going to.
You're right.
How does the stadium insure, insure the state police for these types of situations?
They're off property, right?
They're not on your property?
No, they're, they're on our property, but we don't insure them. They don't ask for insurance, and we don't provide insurance to them. And if, if, part of what I've learned over the last six months is, that's actually relatively common. You know, we, we talked to the Red Sox, we talked to the folks at TD Bank North Garden, they don't have an obligation to provide insurance for the police details or the municipality. They're providing indemnity, and the indemnity is very similar to the indemnity that we have now, but there's no insurance requirement there. And, and, you know, to be fair, Dick and I have a difference of opinion about why the Red Sox and the Bruins and Celtics operate one way, and we are being asked it. You know, I truly like and respect Dick, so I don't wanna suggest otherwise, but, but they don't provide insurance, and, and and the reason for that is, is baked into the detail rate is an overhead component, and I think that's also the case here.
Not, Mark, hey, you know, we're, we're starting to get off the top. I'm not, I don't mean to cut you off, Jim, but that's really... It's not, I'm not talking about bossing, but, I, you know what? Anybody in the board feel like my suggestion's a good one? About making them cover the, 'cause I, I think that's an amicable solution to this at this point in time. It's a low risk for you. And what I mean, cover the 50,000, we'll stick to the 7,500, so you're really only at 42.5, okay? And it's gotta be in writing, and then you can have your event on the 6th. It gives you to the 19th.
Market isn't 42.5, because it's per, it's 42.5 per claim.
Right, well, that's, the liability this board is not willing to take on for. We've been through this over and over again. We're not willing to take that risk, you're not either, so we're a steelmate. It's business, okay? And we represent 17,000 people that own the town. So we're asking you, since it's such a risk, low-risk thing that everybody portrayed to me over the last 10 days, they've heard, oh, soccer's no big deal, it's a low risk, you can let it go for the 50,000 deductible for just those events. Well, this buys you time, frees up everybody for 21 days, basically, and I think it's a good idea. And I don't think it's that much to ask. So how does the board feel about that? Does anybody feel like this is a good solution, or do we wanna sit here and bang heads all night?
Can we do that?
Yeah, we can make that motion. If they accept it, they accept it.
Is it enforceable?
No, they can, they can just not accept it.
I think they've said that they can't, that today...
They said, all, I think the focus then remains on concert events, larger venues, they're looking to get this fixed up, this gives them more time. I mean, it's either that or nothing at this point. I mean, really, what are we gonna do here?
I think, well, I think one thing, if, if we gave, uh, everybody until the 3rd, the outcome is still potentially the same, depending on what happens. We will not compromise on the $50,000 deductible, and we will have...
And then we have a too-long meeting, 'cause...
So then on the 3rd, we, you know, hopefully, doing it on the 3rd potentially gives time to work it out, so that we don't get to that point. We're at that point today.
But we're trying to free up the board from all the inconvenience.
What about this, Mark, if it's, uh, and I, believe me, I know what you're talking about, trying to get up the day before a holiday. I don't know what you guys talked about in the 10 minutes, but if you're, if you're fairly confident that you can get from there to there to the 3rd, expedite a little bit work on a Saturday, Sunday, whatever you gotta do, and we'll fin, we'll wrap this up on the 2nd. If you're here on the 2nd, we'll do it. If you're not here on the 2nd, you know, I'm sorry, there's, there's five people, we gotta do, go with four or three, but this is a big enough issue that I think we need to go a few days to give them an opportunity to work on.
Jim, if on the 3rd, we are still a steelmate, then, then cancels it.
We don't, we don't.
You know, I don't know what else to say, but I'm wondering if they can discuss this with the retire organization, come back and see if it's palatable.
They can, they can go discuss this right now and take five minutes.
If it's palatable, Mark's suggestion to self-insure.
It's just for one event.
Well, if I, if I can interject, to answer your question, I, I'll be comfortable well before the 3rd whether or not the procurement issue is, is solvable. Okay? I'll let you know. If I, if I find out there's no hope, then there's no hope, there's no sense in my coming in on the 3rd telling you that. I'll tell you that well before, and you can cancel the 3rd.
But then we still can't make a decision, do we? We need to make a motion tonight to have them have an alternative in place. Because we're not gonna reconvene for some other scheme.
Mark, I, I understand that, but if, and if I could just continue.
Settle down.
Mark, you gotta watch what you say and how you say it.
Well, everybody sitting at this table, Deb, is trying to circumvent the bylaws, the laws of the town, and it's not working out.
And I understand that, but if you go back to the original thing, if, if the letter was written eight weeks ago, you were in the...
Stop, stop.
So, 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 Mark, let me get back to that. If, if you were to re, if you scheduled a meeting for the 3rd, if prior to the 3rd, at, at least on the procurement issue, the bylaw issues, if it's clear to me we're not going to be able to meet, comply with those bylaws and with procurement statutes, I'll tell you, I'll tell you well before the 3rd. Well, not well before the 3rd, I'll probably tell you on Monday. And, and if it's not the first meeting, you've canceled. In terms of the issue, are we gonna solve the problem, which to me, the problem is the 50,000, it's not procurement, it's not compliance with bylaws? That's not up to me, that's up to Jim, and if he's, if he sees it's not gonna happen, he'll tell me, I'll tell you, and, and you... In, in other words, I don't expect the board to convene on the 3rd without their having the expectation that we've solved the problem.
But what I'm saying, but what I'm saying to you, we can make the motion tonight to back up what I've said 15 times about now, to allow them to proceed and have the event if they will take on the deductible. If they don't want to accept that at that point in time, because you're gonna make the board reconvene one way or another for some reason.
I, I, I think that's fine. I, I think what you're suggesting is fine, is we, we kick it off at the 3rd. In the event that, that the board is unable to reach agreement on that date, then in order to obtain a license, go forward, they're gonna have to, it, for that, there's just one soccer event between...
Now the 20th.
Then that's the condition of the board, if that's how the board feels, and I, I get you on that, sure. And all I have to do is draft that motion.
Yeah?
I think there's two. I don't know what to schedule with, I think there's one the following weekend, and then the...
Two soccer events?
On Jovi is 20.
When's the next one?
I don't have it, I'm sorry. I thought it was like 6 and 12.
Randy?
I, I thought the 12th rang a bell as well, Jim.
Network connection? I, I certainly appreciate your efforts. I do wanna let you know, though, that I, Mike Norick is going out on a limb and saying he will have something for us before the 6th of July. Now we're talking about having it a couple of days earlier, so I, what I'd like to do, if it's okay with you, is I will call Mike first thing tomorrow morning and run this new schedule by him, and if he says it's hopeless, I will send a note to Dick and let him know that, and then this whole thing is...
But then you can't have an event. I'm trying to give you an out from a motion tonight, because...
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry. All I'm suggesting is, as soon as I know that it's impossible, I will let you know. Uh, and hopefully that'll be at least helpful as far as schedules are concerned. That, that's the best I can do.
Do you want this board to make a motion where I am getting repetitive, that you can have your event as long as the KO group agrees in writing to cover the, the difference in the deductible of the $50,000 to have the soccer games? Giving us time to work through the rest of the situation. Because we're not gonna re, if you don't come together with some plan, then there's nothing. We're not coming back to the table to talk about it anymore, then you can't have the event. I think that's how we're going here. You're saying if you don't have nothing together by Monday or Tuesday, you're not gonna ask us to reconvene. If we can't reconvene before... If we can't reconvene before the 6th, then there's nothing. Do you want something?
Well, you know, I'm probably being too much of a lawyer, and I apologize for that, but I'm really looking at this and saying that we have our insurance, and we've provided you with this certificate, and I need to provide an answer for you, and I will do that. This is insurance that we cannot get, and we are facilitating, in essence. We are really trying hard to find insurance for your police detail, so that you can have an acceptable level of risk for the events we hold at the stadium. So, with all of that in mind, I don't think it would be helpful, if that's what you're asking, to have the motion that you're suggesting. I think what would probably be most helpful, if you wouldn't mind, is for me to check in with Mike Norick tomorrow and find out what he thinks about the schedule, and then let Dick know, and then whatever you feel is appropriate, you certainly should do. But I don't want to cause you to come in when you don't have to. If we don't have something in the way of a proposal, then, you know, let's all enjoy the 4th instead.
Why don't we post a meeting from Monday and Tuesday and Wednesday, and just have it there, in case we need to...
Just follow that to its logical conclusion, then the event doesn't happen.
And that's exactly what I said, three times. Then you have nothing. If you don't come to agree with the insurance...
To be clear, there'll be litigation. We will be seeing what's going to happen here. We're going to be in court next week if we can't solve it.
Then what good was the, then what good was during the application process that we had, we had that motion? What good was it? If it's not binding, if we can't pull a license because the insurance hasn't been...
You are going to pull a license.
Yeah, but if they do litigation, that means they'll have the event anyway. I mean, what good, what good is doing anything if the event's going to happen anyway?
And what good is trying to help them?
And putting the town at risk.
I'm advised, I would be shocked if a license was pulled, that they would simply not hold the event without seeking court intervention.
And they'd probably win. But you know what? We did our jobs.
Okay.
That's what it's all about here, is protecting the town and for the voters that put us here. Jim, you want to add anything to this now?
No.
This can turn to a rodeo.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Please, I have, neither one of us have threatened any litigation, I want to make that clear. We're really trying to work together, and we've been trying to do that for over six months. And I'm going to try again tomorrow to get Mr. Norick to move even faster than he's already moving, and I am sincerely hopeful that this could all happen cooperatively, and, but please, we're not threatening any litigation, and we are sincerely hopeful that things work out here. And I do really like your idea, Slavomir Brew, that if you wouldn't mind having some contingent dates available to us, we'll keep you informed. Every chance I get, I'll send a note to Dick letting him know what's going well and what's not going well. I can't make any guarantees, I really can't, but we will try our best.
One motion.
Bob, can you post meetings for next Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday?
Well, let's not put down that, I haven't agreed to any of that.
Sorry. Mark, if nothing else, and I know they won't agree to it, it is a fallback position that potentially will allow the event to take place.
Right.
It's a fallback.
And showing, it's showing that you're trying to work through this, you know, I mean, it's, I think that we should make that kind of a motion. Anybody disagree with that?
Yeah.
I think I do, for the reason, if I had the option of, they don't want that option. So, forcing them something to do that they said three times that they don't want to do, I think we stand back and say, we gave them the application contingent upon an insurance agreement that was worked out, we feel that it's not worked out, so at the end of this exercise, they don't get the permit.
Yeah, the permit has not physically been issued to them at this point.
So, if they see that as the case, and they're still saying, obviously, we live in a real world, if I had a guess, the event's going to go forward, and we will deal with it in the court. But to force somebody that said they don't want to do it to hold their own, to put money up when they said no, I mean, when they look at the boss of American, that was always a peaceful thing, and things change overnight. So, to ask a business to take $50,000 liability times 100, 200, 300 people, that's kind of unreal also to self-insure that number. So, we'll do our best, the 2nd, the 3rd, the 1st. If it doesn't work, then the event has to be canceled, because we have not come up with an agreeable indemnification clause that the town has said, that's okay.
Okay.
So, I think there's more liability to say, we're going to put it on their shoulders, they're going to say no, and then we're both dealing with an issue after the fact, because they've already said no.
Ginny, how do you...
So, we're going to give them a permit after the fact that they said no, I don't see that.
What else, Jim? Ginny, how do you feel?
No, I agree, I agree with Jim.
All right, you also?
Yeah, I think we should...
I would, you know, I'm going to post a meeting. I'll talk to Bob Cutler, and I'll post nothing tonight.
Just for point of reference, nothing could be held on Monday night anyways, because that would have been posted by this afternoon.
Unless it's under provisions of emergency...
Yeah, but this would not be an emergency situation.
That'd be a public emergency. So, it'd be Tuesday, the...
Tuesday would be the first...
If you could post Tuesday, Wednesday.
I'm inclined to do that. She has called, I don't know if I'm inclined to do that at this point in time. So, you guys get together, no contact with any board members, other than through Town Council or Town Manager, okay? Nobody. I don't want this, anybody having any conversations with anybody but Bob Cutler and the attorneys to their attorneys. All right? Is that clear? Anything you want to add, Jim?
I would certainly defer to your lawyers on this, but I don't know if that's, I don't know if that's legal, to be perfectly frank, and Dan's a sensitive town.
Well, no, I'm talking about the business. You can talk to them, you know, we've got this discussion before.
Yep.
Nobody to talk about this with any board member, about what we talked about tonight with the board members.
I certainly won't.
All right? Everybody can make all the little phone calls they want through Bob Cutler, Town Council, and they will inform me, and I can inform the board if we have another meeting.
Absolutely.
All right? Is that okay? That way, it just keeps it from being around robin.
So, hold on, so it's clear to me, what is the action that the board is taking tonight?
None.
None.
I think we're advising you, based on the 10-minute discussion you've had, if there's a way to work it out, we'll do our job and post it for Tuesday.
But as of now, you're not posting, you're going to post a meeting as of Tuesday?
Tuesday, Wednesday.
And Wednesday.
It's not going to be Friday.
If you would, just post it for those days, you don't have to hold it. Post it for Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday, just posting a meeting for those days. You do have the issue of, oh, sorry, but you've got a condition that expires on June 30. It expires, and you're going to renew it or not, huh? I'm sorry?
Sunday night.
So, the premise expires.
It expires.
So, all those two.
What happens if that happens? Can we...
They can always go, we have a revision.
Yeah, the summer 6th...
Can you have a public hearing, Bob?
You wouldn't have, well, yeah.
You'd have to post a public hearing.
But isn't, are you posting a hearing for...
A meeting.
The other, we do have a vote continuing those things to July 3rd, okay? But I haven't included the condition that you wanted, because it sounds to me like the board is not behind it. So, we drafted a motion that basically puts over the, continues the approval until, I say not later than July 3rd, but it may be later than July 3rd. I could say July 5th, okay? Knowing that you're going to meet on the 3rd, so not later, the 3rd is not later than the 5th. And I anticipated a meeting on the 5th, but you can still have a meeting on the 3rd.
No, it's not. It's the 2nd or the 3rd. I'm not agreeing to the 5th.
I think what he's saying is extend, the permits expire, the permit expires...
The 3rd.
The 3rd. So, making a motion to extend it to the 3rd, midnight the 3rd, that way we have Monday, Tuesday.
I thought it was the 5th.
We did originally say the 5th, but that doesn't mean that you have to have a meeting on the 5th, we could have your meeting on the 3rd.
Mark, you...
But just in case, by some folk say everything's all worked out, but logistically we can't get some final decision that you're okay with, or any other person's okay with, just to leave it in place so it's not expired. Doesn't mean the meeting has to happen on the 5th.
That seems reasonable.
Dick, are you saying that the license expires on the 3rd?
The conditions of approval have a deadline, you have a deadline of, so extending those...
The license expires, the event is on the 6th, so, yeah, okay, I just wasn't...
So, extending those to not later than the 5th, but my associate's absolutely right, it doesn't mean you have to meet on the 5th, it gives us to that there, yes?
There won't be a form on the 5th.